Mr. Mack says it's.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the January 17th School Committee meeting. I'm calling the meeting order at 6:00 p.m. And we have a brief agenda, an even briefer agenda. The school is canceled and we are going to have a couple of our friends come. I'm gonna open up. The first item was citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments?
Are there any citizens?
There are citizens. Yes, there are. Okay, we'll move forward. Updates. Saturday, this Saturday, January 20th, finally, it's here. The Budget Workshop, which starts at 8:15. It'll be in this room. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that the agenda's been up online for a while now. So if you want to take a look at that, we will... It is gonna be workshop schedule, so we won't be doing our typical, regular school committee things. And then, the calendar's been updated again. That is in your pocket, so make sure you see that. Let me see, what else? I think that's it for now. We're not gonna have a student presentation, because obviously, the kids weren't in school, so they can't be here tonight. So we'll move that to another meeting. Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Clinchy for her to give us an update.
Sure, just a quick superintendent's report tonight. Kind of three quick items. The first, storm watch and cleanup again. We want to thank Rob Freeswick and his crew and everybody that helps us to clean up after the blankets of snow that hit us. Rob came to me, I hope, I'm telling the story out of tail, I know, I apologize, but he said to me today, he says, "Do you think it's okay if I just come tonight to the meeting with my jeans? I think you've been here since like 4:30 this morning, right?" And I think we started corresponding, a quarter after four this morning, and I was one of the last ones to make the call this morning, as I was saying to Lynn Cluddy. I took a look and I realized that every single school district abutting to ours had closed. I thought, "I really don't have a choice now." And so, you know, at the end of the day, I think it was the right decision. You know, we were driving the roads this morning and it was, it was tough slugging out there. Lancaster, I was most concerned about again this time, because they really were gonna get the greater amount of snow than Bolton or Stowe. But, special thanks to our DPDWs again, who just do a great job, and all of our local guys who go out there and snowplow and, you know, trip away at the ice and everything else. So, thanks, Rob, again, to everyone. Budget Workshop, I just want to mention a couple of key things about the Budget Workshop coming up. Again, you heard the 8:15 start time. Exactly as Chairman Ramosco said, it's not a typical school committee meeting, so it doesn't run that way. It runs very, we were pretty quick about moving through all the ideas, because there's so many centers to get through, cost centers to get through. Just to kind of give you a little bit of an update on a couple of things, though, we had said to you in December, and we said, "This is early," and we always stress that, "This is early, our numbers are gonna change." And they have, even since then. Now, when we first spoke to you in December, early December, at that point in time, we were sitting at about a 6.99% increase over last year's budget. That is increased, that's not to panic, but that's just where it is, because we've had some numbers, more formalized numbers come in. So right now, we're sitting at about a 7.38% increase. Now, we all know around the table that that's not the number that it can stay at, we understand that. Because we also want to highlight, remember that just because it says 7.38%, doesn't mean that that directly translates into that kind of a percentage for the three communities. It would be higher. Like, it will show, like, when you get, don't panic when you get your sheets and they say like 10% or 11%, because just what we show on the budget is the 7.38, just in terms of the big dollars, that's not how it equates to, for the three communities. In that, just a couple of things, again, just to kind of highlight for you. We've got about $100,000, if that doesn't change between now and Saturday, but right now, there's about $100,000 in there for OCA. Remember that we started at 100 last year, and then I think we went down to 50, but we started with 100 again this year. If you all decide that you want to go back to 50 on that line, or whatever, that's gonna be something you're gonna want to think about. We also have that $10,000 in there towards the forensic audit that you'd asked for, so that's in there as well.
The grants.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. You're gonna hear Joan will not be on site that morning, but she'll be coming in. A couple of things that we need to keep in mind is, again, some of the grant dryups. We've got wind that we've got another grant that will dry up, not this year, but next year. So we need to start thinking about that piece. You know that we had another grant that we were counting on this year that dried up in the middle of the year that didn't come to us, so you need to keep that in mind. The $113,000 loss for Circuit Breaker, even though it's happening inside of this year, because we're one year in advance, it won't really affect us till the 1920 year, but you need to know that that's, that's something we've got our eye on as well. So you're gonna hear Joan talk about a couple of those grants that have continued to dry up, or are on sequence to dry up in the next little bit. The other, a couple of other things, you're gonna hear us talk about the leach field tonight. We all know that that's been an issue. They're gonna talk tonight about the fact that, you know, the basic work was probably around $150,000, but it's gonna be close towards 300 in that ballpark there. We've all known that that's gonna be an issue. I said to, said to them tonight, "I want to make sure that we put the picture up that shows those protection buffers," because I think that says it all. When you take a look at those protection buffers, and you see there isn't, somebody made a joke at the meeting last night, our advisory, Bolton Advisory Meeting, about the fact that you probably only had about four square feet left that you could have put that leach field on. And that's pretty much, when you take a look at it, it isn't exactly four square feet, but it's, there's not a lot of room for movement. So, inside of that budget that you're going to receive on Saturday, when we go through it on Saturday, you're gonna see a number for 300,000 in there. The question, of course, is, is that where it belongs? And I don't have an answer for you, and I don't know that Don Lo had an answer for us last night at the advisory meeting, but somewhere, we need to show that 300,000 for the leach field, whether it's there or somewhere else. So right now, you're gonna see it in that budget. The other thing that's in that, inside of that budget is about 263,000 of unidentified cuts or efficiencies, however you wanna, or staff changes, however you want to, whatever language you want to put on there. That's, efficiencies is sitting in there, so you need to know that. But that's still sitting at that 7.38. So it just gives you a flavor of where we are at. And as I said to Lorraine earlier today, you know, the bottom line is, once we do, like I said to Pat, let's stop here, just like we did last year, stop here, this is where we're at, at this point in time, which is exactly what we did last year, and put it out at the workshop, which is exactly what we're gonna do this year, and then our work starts again after that, to say, "Okay, what does that horse training look like here, there, and everywhere? You know, are there some staff that are leaving that we won't have to necessarily replace? Is that a potential? What are the potentials that are in here?" So, you'll see us go to work on that. But I just wanted to give you a flavor. We're hoping the Budget Workshop binders will be available, at the very least, after 10:00 Friday morning, if you wanted to pop in and pick them up. Don't feel that you have to do that. If you want to wait until Saturday, that's fine as well. We'll be putting the finishing touches on them tomorrow. If they're finished earlier, Elida can reach out and let you know, and if you want to pop in earlier, you can. So that's kind of just a bit of foundation before Saturday morning, just to kind of let you know where that's at. The third item online is just the town reports. The town reports, and thanks to Elida for all of the work that she does on this, have now been written, finished, and will be submitted to the towns in accordance with their deadlines. Housekeeping item is my last, just that I will not be available to be here on the February 14th School Committee meeting, whether you need me or not, as told to you. I absolutely understand if you want to have your meeting without me.
Who gets to sit in your chair? Because we will need someone in your chair.
Someone in my chair. We could do that, too. We could put somebody in my chair, too. So, you might want to think about that.
Yeah, so it's, you pick, you pick who gets to be on the hot seat.
I pick who gets to be here, okay.
Yep.
So that's it for me for tonight.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, new business. Dave Formato?
Yes, we're gonna bring them on.
And this is on the Nesho Regional High School Leach Field Estimate on Discussion On-Site Engineering.
And we're gonna bring Rob Freeswick up to the table, and Pat, if you'll join us at the table as well, because the three of you have really been working in tandem here on this particular project. A couple of things, I just want to kind of notate before, as I tee it up, and Dave will turn it over to you here in a minute. We have been staying in contact with the Department of Environmental Protection, so that's one of the first things that you need to be aware of. You know, Dave will probably lay out some different types of timelines that we might want to consider. You know, there's a part of us that says, you know, should we be really ambitious and just get this thing done, or do we pull back? Do we try to include this, as Lynn had asked earlier, in with the SOI? Do we try to, you know, we've been talking, when I've spoken with MSBA about it, they're aware that we've got this issue. You know, it's a, it's a big ticket item, it just really is. And, you know, so, so having said all of that, I think for me, one of the biggest things is, like I said earlier, when you take a look at that picture, so, Dave will tee it up, and I know that you're coming in tonight with a $300,000 price tag, and I know that I had said, "Is that all in?" You know, like, at one point in time, I wondered if we were gonna have to pick up pavement and go through, but it doesn't sound like that's necessarily how it's going to play out. So, Dave, we'll turn it over to you, and then Rob and Pat, if you can kind of chime in, that'd be great. Dave?
Well, first, thank you all for having me tonight. You know, I'm happy to be here, and, yeah, just to start, I'm gonna spend a few minutes just kind of going through the, you know, kind of how we got here stuff, but I think that these meetings are usually much more productive if it's a, you know, a discussion rather than a presentation, so if there's a question, just, you know.
Oh, there will be.
Stop me, yeah, stop me mid-sentence. I don't want to, you know, this is, I like to keep it, you know, less formal and more...
Kudos to you for coming out.
Wow. I was saying that, actually, tonight, Franklin, I'm from Franklin, we actually had school today, so, so it's like, Rob called me, he's like, "We didn't have school, but we're gonna do the meeting." And I'm like, "I didn't even realize that," because I just thought everyone had school, so, glad to be here. So, you know, just the background, the state, back in 2016, issued a new discharge permit for the facility at the high school. And, in that permit, they essentially caught up with their own regulations relative to discharges, you know, wastewater discharges within water supply protection districts. And, you know, as Superintendent Clinchy was mentioning, if you look at the site, and we have a figure in our report that shows all these various pink circles, those are those protection districts in there.
Can you bring that up for us, Elida, please?
Essentially, what they are is, it's a function of, is there public water supply, and then how much, yeah, how much water is that public water supply providing, so...
Now, just to give you a flavor, here is the high school right here.
Right.
And these are the tennis courts. The water treatment building is over in here, and there's a well site here, right inside the school.
That's your well.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Right.
And then there are two other wells, and these are the protective barriers, right?
Right.
And so if you take a look, we, there's not a lot of land left to work with for the leaching field.
Yeah, and as actually point of reference, your existing leaching field, which is causing all the problems, is up front. So I'm not sure if everyone's aware of that, but it's actually right out in here. So as you can see, it's not just your well that's impacting, you know, one, the first question that we were asked is, "Why can't we just move our well?" Well, it's actually these two wells are hydrologically closer to the leaching field than your own well.
Than our own well.
Groundwater's actually flowing this direction. So, the bigger issue was, is that these two wells, if the state measures connection in terms of time, like, how long does it take, you know, a gallon of water that's put in the ground in your field to reach that well? And for this particular site, it was less than six months, which is very restrictive. There's different categories. So in theory, water coming out of your leaching field is taking less than six months to actually get to those other well sites. So that's why, if you look at the permit, the limits on what you can discharge and what you have to treat to became very aggressive compared to what they were. And the state, when they issued that, initially, they issued it and just said, "Yeah, you know, here's your new limits." And working with Jeff and Whitewater, your operator, we went back to the state a couple of times and said, "Listen, you know, this, this is a fundamental change, the existing system, it just can't meet those limits as is, so you just can't utilitarily do something like that." So, the final permit, actually, if you look at it, has a two-tiered structure, and that's where those dates come from, where you're still, right now, working under your existing permit limits, and then on September 2018, the state is saying, "You either have to move the discharge outside of those protective areas, or upgrade the treatment plant to treat to these new limits."
And it's in the school.
So...
Yeah, or it's in front of the school. The treatment plant, yeah.
Yeah, so the treatment plant's actually not the, that's okay where it is, you know, you wouldn't have to move that, because it's not actually discharging to the ground, it's a closed system, so that's fine where it is. But you either need to move the leaching so it's not discharging within those areas of protected areas, or make changes to your treatment plant so that you can keep the discharge where it is, but treat to a higher level.
So I want to ask a couple of questions before you go on.
Sure.
So, this is something that the state's mandating.
Yes.
So we can't be the only ones dealing with this.
Nope.
So, this, so the state's mandating it, do you know how many other school districts are facing something like this?
It's not, it's not a school district issue. I actually have two other clients, Cisco being one, right off the street here, and there's a condominium association, the next on 117. They're having the exact same issue, they got issued the exact same permits, and they're going through the exact same process.
But there's no financial relief from the mandate?
No, and so private entities like Cisco, they're funding this thing, it's like, just open...
So are we.
Right, so it's an unfunded mandate, for sure.
Right, yeah, that's my point, yeah.
Yes, there's no assistance to anybody, and, you know, private-public, it's, and where this comes from, and I, I think that it's unfortunate, the way the state kind of approached this, because these regulations have actually been on the books since like 2000-ish, and they just never really got around to enforcing them to the letter of the law, and there were two, the governor instituted two-year automatic permit renewals, so everyone's permits just rolled for years. So, basically, what happened was, you had this huge chunk of time where everything was just sitting static. And so now, since all that time has passed, everyone's going through this problem, and everyone bunched up, and everyone kind of crunched into each other at the line, and then they all renewed at the same time, so the state just started issuing all these permits, and the water supply groups are saying, "Listen, we have regulations that prevent, you know, that prohibit these discharges, we have to enforce them." So, you know, it was almost like one part of the state regulatory DEP stuff got to the other part and said, "You know, you're in these just protection districts, these are the limits, it's really not negotiable, it's actually written into the regulations, so it has to be enforced." So that's why this kind of happened, it all happened at once, and there wasn't a lot of warning. It would have been nice if there was some public outreach during that static period, where people were kind of given notice that this was gonna be coming, so they could have been preparing, discussing.
Saving some money.
Exactly, right. So I think that that's really the unfortunate part about this, is it caught a lot of people off guard, and it was unnecessary, I think it could have been avoided, so...
One of the regular questions we hear is, "Well, why can't you be grandfathered?" And there's no grandfathering in this, and I think that that's important for our folks to know, our listeners are home to understand.
Absolutely, right. I think that that's kind of what was happening, where some of these permits, I mean, obviously, these conditions existed from the beginning, and when the regulations went into effect for the water supply protection side, it just kind of sat there. It wasn't, you know, it started out as a guidance document, and then it got, you know, translated into a regulation, but there wasn't a lot of fanfare, and there wasn't a lot made of it. So I think that they, in the state's mind, that kind of was like that grace period type grandfathering thing, but it wasn't anything formal. And it, I think it was handled poorly, you know, because obviously, everyone should have been well aware of this, and, you know, I asked the state when this whole, that, "Why aren't you giving people, you know, five-year permit?" You know, like, say, "Okay, you knew permits this, but the next permit's gonna have that." And they said, "Well, we've given everybody four years of, you know, renewals." And I'm like, "Yeah, but you didn't tell anybody this was coming four years ago either, you would have been, you should have put it in the letter, you know, send your permits being, 'Auto-renewal, by the way, you know, there's these new regulations that you were gonna have to address when it does.'" None of that happened, and that's the unfortunate part, so...
Lynn?
So what's driving this? Because what's our number right now, our FLOA? They want to get us lower than one, right?
So, right now, in terms of, there's a bunch of different parameters, but it's a BOD 30, suspended salts 30, total nitrogen 10, oil and grease 15, and a bacteria of 200. The new limits are BOD 10, so it's going from 30 to 10, suspended salt 30 to 5, total nitrogen 10 to 5, there's an organic carbon limit which wasn't there, it's now, and then a turbid limit which wasn't there, and then the bacteria's going from 200 to 14. So that, and that's a function of, these numbers are literally written right into the regulations based on that travel time. Remember, I said that you're within six months, so that's like the formula. It just says, this is what, if you're this, you're this, so...
Okay, so these are numbers that they're using, but are they heading towards something? Because I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, right, they went from 30 to 10, which is a lot, they went from 200 to 14, which is a lot.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, "Okay, but nobody's getting sick, I don't understand what's going on." So is there something else going on where, if we comply to this, since the permits are only every four years, are we gonna have to go with lower numbers again?
You can never say never, but this is, you're actually at the point here where you really almost can't treat lower than this. It's kind of like best available technology type stuff.
Available today.
I would say, you know, just in kind of looking at the tea leaves, those numbers are, I mean, they're essentially drinking water quality-ish, so, and that's kind of what they're going at, is that, you know, you're so close to those two wells across the street, hydrologically, that essentially, they want the stuff coming, going into the ground at your point, to essentially be drinkable quality at that point.
And these are the same numbers as the Endozari water?
Tough to say, I don't, you know, I don't know, they do things differently on the water supply side, it's not apples to apples in terms of like...
Different standards.
It's just in terms of how they, you know, how they measure things, what's important to them. So, and I'm not really familiar with that, I really can't speak to that unfortunately, sorry.
So I have a few, I have a few questions, based on what I'm looking at here.
Yeah.
So the pink area, is that the area of influence of the well, or of the leach field?
The well.
Okay. So is it our well that's actually the primary issue, not the, I was led to believe that it was owned by the post office?
It is. So you, in theory, you could move your well, and if the other two wells weren't part of that, if you weren't within their IWPA, you'd be fine, because you moved your well, which would solve the problem. The problem is you have the two wells across the street, and they're actually hydrologically closer, because groundwater's moving in that direction. So it's the two wells across the street that are the primary driver.
So it only looks like one well, really, the one on the lower side is the one that's affected, not, the other one's very close to it, but not actually within the sphere?
It's right on the edge, there's, I think, a tiny portion of the field that's in that second well, but you're right, it's primarily the one that's on the lower.
Okay, so when was that well, do you know when that permit was issued on the lower well?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah.
So my question that I have on that was, did we have that in place? And I understand about the grandfathering, but they issued a well permit afterwards, so to me, maybe that's just they don't care, but they would go on the state to come back to the well owner and say, "Listen, we issued something that's in the sphere of influence here, you need to retap your well somewhere else outside that sphere." And/or, could we pay for that well to be retapped somewhere else and avoid the cost of doing a new leach field?
So you'd have to do two wells, you'd have to do your well and their well, because your well is also in the same...
Have you looked at the cost of doing that, first putting in a whole new leach field?
We, the original conversations with the state about moving the wells went nowhere. They've, they essentially said, "Listen, that's not, that's not on the table," and it kind of died right there.
Because if we do the high school over, or if we have a new school built, that well will be, from my understanding, potentially destroyed, because the well itself is inside the school.
Inside the school, correct.
So if that's the case, that then removes that particular issue, and we still have to re-drill a well somewhere on that property. So if we have something available now to re-drill the well, it makes sense to me to re-drill the well and put it there, if we're going to, in fact, have to do that down the line. So I honestly think we need to be looking at repositioning the wells for the high school and maybe for the adjacent properties, and figuring out whether the cost for that is gonna be substantially less to do than put it in a new leach field.
But what's missing is all the other wells that are around the school, they only did those three, and I'm not really sure why, because...
But it wouldn't change our leach field, it wouldn't, it would change the sphere for the, for the well, right?
But aren't all of those pink things on top of the leaching field? Those pink circles? We're exactly as leach field.
Yeah.
That shower was...
Yeah, so every single well is in, all three of them are on the leach field.
No, the one on the top left is not really, it's on the very edge.
So my understanding is that the, yeah, the leaching, this is the driveway that comes into the school, so my understanding is the leaching field is, it doesn't cross that driveway. So this leaching field, this well over here...
It's right on the edge.
It's right on the edge. This well's definitely in, and this well's definitely in. So, there's some debate about this, to your point, and it very well may be that this well meets the criteria, but it certainly is these two that are a concern.
Right, but when, when we go to solve the problem, we need to solve the entire problem, and I see that if we have this well that's in the center of the school now, that will most, quite likely be destroyed, or broken down to the point that we have to re-drill another well. Because I was told there's all kinds of things that we don't know once they start pulling the building apart.
Right.
The contaminants and so forth. So my, I guess my point being is, if we put a new leach field in somewhere else, and we've got an existing leach field, that existing leach field's going to be still a source of contaminant. You can't put a well in a certain area when you've got an old leach field there, unless you've, like, remediated that somehow?
No, you'd be fine. I mean, if that, once that leach field goes away, there's no, you're not constrained by, like, it's not like a, like an ongoing plume of, like an oil, you know, spilled, something like that, it doesn't work that way for that stuff.
But, back at this, I mean, all those houses, I mean, we'd have to show the wells in all those circles for all those houses before we even had that conversation.
You're talking about over there and so forth on the house, and I get there, but there's that whole empty spot that's further up north. Do you see on the map itself? That's all empty land, that's right there.
I don't know if we own that. No, that's privately owned, I think.
Right, but if there's, if it's not affecting wells and all this other stuff, I don't know, see, there's a question, and the thing is, can we, if we haven't looked into specifically retapping the wells to see, and going to the other owners and seeing hypothetically, if we move their wells and paid for that move, would it be considerably less and solve the problem, knowing that we will have to put another well in at another point in time?
But I think we also, we have to be cognizant of the fact that this is already, this has been a topic for discussion with them, and you heard him say that it went nowhere with DEP, so I mean, we have to, like, even if that was a possibility, we have to get the buy-in from the DEP, too. So remember that that's a, that's a player in all of this.
Totally get it, but if we're gonna be putting in a leach field somewhere else, we're going to have to find a place to put our new well in also.
Right.
And so what I'm saying is, if we put the leach in without the forethought of where we're putting that well...
The well, right.
We're putting ourselves in a really tough situation, where people are gonna go back and say, "Knuckleheads, you didn't figure this out."
You didn't figure it out, yeah.
And you need to put the gas line in there, because there's a gas line that runs right through the middle, but you can't go now. So we're pretty limited, but you need to show all that before you start having a conversation.
That's what I'm saying. We need the whole picture, I think, to understand where these pieces are gonna fit together with a puzzle.
My, my-
Go ahead.
My understanding from just, you know, kind of being third party to the conversations on the water supply side, was that the two wells that are across the street are essentially on very small parcels. And what you have to understand about moving water supplies is, is that, so those, those big pink circles move with them. So essentially what ends up happening is, is that, you know, you can't site the well off property, and, you know, if you start moving them away from your existing leach field, you're actually starting to encroach on stuff on the other side that's existing. So it becomes a catch-22. You solve a problem on one side, you create a problem somewhere else, and that the other thing is that it wasn't entirely clear that you could move far enough away and still be on property to get those protective radii outside of your leach field. That, that, that's my sense of why it didn't really go further than, than, you know, to something of, let's really look at this hard.
Totally with you on that. That home on the bottom, with that property that's on the bottom, I could be totally mistaken on this.
I think that's the post office.
Don's, Don's not here. The one on the bottom, I think, is actually the, the-
DEP.
The pizza, I think it's the pizza place in the house that's right next door to that. And if I'm not mistaken, there was a, a pretty substantial gas spill over in the DEP, and there, we're still, as a town, we're still paying for bottled water for them to actually use at the homes, because that particular well is, and, and again, I, I'm just going off of, kind of sort of, but that well is, is, from my understanding, either contaminated or has had some severe issues. So my point being, if they do have the, the acreage that's available in that particular lot, they might very well be happy to have that particular wellhead moved somewhere else, if it can be. But I, yeah, whatever, I'm just trying to look at all that, because three hundred thousand plus whatever it turns into, plus, you know, it, it's a lot of money.
I can tell you in conversations that I had with the DEP, my most recent conversation, I asked them specifically, you know, if, can we delay this project? Because now if, if we were to go that route and try to pursue that, which I don't think could happen, because I don't think either one of those properties has enough land to place another well. They just didn't wanna hear that at this point, because they, they wouldn't wait for a construction project to be completed, so I'm sure they're not going to wait for us to find another-
Sort of do, shut us down, tell us we can't have school? Well, I, I, I'm not being flippant, I'm being serious about that. What, what happens in that case?
Uh, well, they do have the ability to fine you for not being flippant.
Sure.
But they're also being unreasonable.
How much is the fine? I mean, if we're trying to buy time-
Right.
-to determine whether or not we build a new high school, which I agree would impact all of this, um, do you know what the fines are for not compliance?
Uh, it's a floating scale.
Based on?
It does, the DEP's got some sort of voodoo formula.
Yeah, he's a DEP thing.
So, you know, I have, I have seen things upwards as high as like, you know, five hundred dollars a day.
And then we're not in compliance too, so that, wow.
But what does that do if we're not in compliance?
Well, that's, that's, that would be generating fines, because every day you discharge and you violate your permit, you're not in compliance, so, right?
Yeah, but it's not-
My concern is-
They're not trying to shut us down, I mean, they're thinking of ruining the budget at that point. It's not like we're not trying to do anything.
Agreed, and so I think that that gets back kind of like to the limiting point, and, and, you know, uh, to, to answer your question, I, I have no problem, you know, reaching out to the state and just asking them if they can maybe explain to me, like, why this water supply relocation is not viable, and, you know, see what they say, and then, you know, share that with, share with you guys. If you don't mind, I'd, I'd be happy to do that.
If you would do that, I think that would-
Because, you know, that'll give you some specific, you know, direction as to kind of why we haven't been going down that path more than we haven't been.
Well, and I, I really think that if they do construction on the high school, because you're affecting so much of the high school, they're gonna make you move that well. So that's gonna have to go somewhere.
Assume that it's somewhere, but then we wanna make sure. That's why I'm saying we need to do the whole picture, because then we need to make sure whatever we did is gonna keep us in compliance with whatever we need to do.
Yeah.
And that we're not that, the same thing with the-
Well, yeah, now we're trying to look at the crystal ball.
Exactly, the small, yeah, but, but we're, I mean, we have such a small parcel in the scale of things, that if we do this, if we move the wrong duck in the wrong way, we are going to screw up the whole entire thing, and then why? Right? I mean-
Then it's good money at the basket.
Is this a larger circle? Is this a larger circle than we had with the other permit?
In terms, no, the, so the, the circles are just tied to water supply, like volume of well pumpers. There's nothing to do with that.
Well, I know that, but there's a circle of detection, and it's always been that size?
Yes.
That's never changed?
Yeah.
Mark, go ahead.
I've been involved in the planning board at STO, and we have dealt with wells related to businesses, and there's a bunch of businesses that desire to cooperate and put in a well for themselves, because they have same, exactly the same issues. And it's very interesting how even though these guys are motivated to do stuff, it has taken them years and years to come to an agreement with each other about something they wanna do. And so getting other parties involved in this kind of stuff is a good way to halt everything and not get what you want, when you need to deal with an outside entity, namely the state, who says you gotta do stuff. So I would suggest that we need to float our own boat and do what we need to do, try and get cooperation from other people who have other agendas and may not be motivated to-
And everybody thinks the district has these deep, deep pockets as it is.
Yeah.
Kathy? And I don't know that anybody can answer the question, but if, I mean, if we're talking about a lot of money, or we've got the preview of what we're dealing with in terms of this year's budget, but should, should it be determined that we do need to build a new high school? I wonder the extent to which that this situation would be taken into account in terms of when you're working with an architect, to decide where it's gonna be? I mean, the well is where it is, and I don't know anything about wells and stuff like that, but if it's there, can you, like, put a pipe to the new high school? Is there a workaround? Because, yeah, I mean, this is a situation that we need to deal with. It's, it's, as much as I hate to spend the money, it's even dumber to spend money on fines, and then you have to, to spend money on this anyway. So I don't know that anybody could answer that. If we could still use the well, would we build a new high school?
We don't know the answer to that until we submit our feasibility study. Steve?
I have a question, and he may have answered it already. Is there any way that the current treatment plan can be enhanced to provide effluent that meets the new requirements?
Yeah, so that was, that was the original task that we did in the report that we generated, was essentially just looking at that. It was like order of magnitude. What are we talking about here relative to, is it simple fix to do, you know, a couple things at the plant, and that's more, you know, effective versus looking at new leaching? And what we came up with is that the existing plant is kind of basically set up to just do what it's doing. It would essentially need a major retrofit and additional equipment to meet these new limits. For example, again, if you look at the permit now, it's BOD suspended solids and nitrogen and disinfections essentially. You're adding two components, turbidity and total organic carbon, which is completely not set up to treat at all. So you'd need to add processes for those in addition to additional capacity to go to those lower limits for the stuff you're already treating for. So, you know, we looked at that number and said, all right, if we had to, if you had to do all this stuff, just real back-of-the-envelope type calculations, you know, it could be over a hundred thousand dollars alone in just plant costs. And oh, by the way, under these new permit limits, you also have increased operations and maintenance costs, because, you know, you go from sampling monthly on BOD to weekly. You go from monthly on TSS to weekly. Nitrogen monthly, twice a week, so-
We have to do that anyway.
No, so if you, if you, if you moved the leaching field, you, you'd stay to your original schedule. So, you know, we estimated that just the additional costs associated with paying your operator to pull those samples and analyze them, it's forty to fifty thousand dollars a year.
Addition.
So, right, additional, just on the operation side, and that's add infinitum. So that, that's never gonna go away, because that's your new permit. So that's why it became pretty clear that, you know, trying to get out of having to treat to these new limits is a good thing, because it gives you some stability and clarity on your permit, and it keeps it kind of where it is, and it doesn't really mess up your operational budget on top of your capital expense. Yes?
Do we know why the well is actually in the middle of the school to be in with? I mean, well, it's insane, right? But there has to be a reason why it was put there, and I'm just looking at the, the footprint that we have as property. Take that, take that sphere, try to fit that anywhere else in the property.
I know, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? So this brings, this brings forward my point that I'm saying, if we're doing something and, and we jeopardize having to redo this well.
Where?
Yeah.
I think a nice courtyard, an architectural feature.
A pretty big courtyard. Mark?
No, just for the well itself. You wouldn't need to do that entire radius.
There's a technique that many developers use when they have that issue of large areas and wells, is they break it up into two or three or four wells, and then that reduces the area for each well, and you can end up having your, your total area be in a way that's easier to manipulate to conform to your lot lines.
Is that crazy, more expensive?
Not necessarily. Uh, depends on the type of well.
We just can't put the pipes across the gas pump. Okay, so, um-
No, sorry.
So the, the only issue I have with this drawing is it doesn't show the leaching field, and it doesn't show, because they're asking us to move the leaching field, and so if we move the leaching field, wherever we put it, so if we're just gonna go back to what they're asking us for, which is, the way I'm, I'm looking at it right now is they have asked for us to move the leaching field, and that's it.
Then, yeah, they're basically kind of painting you on that corner, I'm sure.
And that's fine, so let's look at it. Okay, so I wanna see like the leaching field, and then I wanna see where all the wells are, because if you're gonna move it, if you move it into the back corner, now you're with those houses up there. If you move it over there, now you're with something else.
So, so oddly enough, the, the, there's two sets of rules for water supply. The wa, the wells that you see here, they're, they're considered public water supply, so they're, they're treated very differently than individual house wells. So individual home, because it's not a public water supply, it has a hundred-foot radius, and that's it.
But what, what's the radius in the leach field?
So there, well, there, you mean, there is no radius of the leach field, it's the footprint.
Okay, so what's the footprint and how, what's the-
So your, your leaching field would need to be a hundred feet away from-
From anywhere.
Right. So if you look at the, right, so if you look at the houses out there, you know, that basically gives you, the entire athletic field would be fine. You're not gonna be more than, you're not gonna be close to a hundred feet. It, it's part of the process, you would, you would have to go through all that, absolutely. That, that's actually important to, to make sure you're not impacted.
But I wanna see that as part of, like, what, because right now you're just kind of floating some options here, right, about in what direction you wanna go in.
Right.
And all you've shown right now is, are these three, but you haven't gone, you're not showing us is what the vast form is. Move the leaching field.
So Dave, just, if, tell me if I'm right, right? We're looking at it being in these areas here, right?
So there's another figure, if we can scroll to it, that actually shows a conceptual leaching field. Cool. It's all the way at the end of the report, sorry.
It's another package, so.
Yeah, I don't think I saw it.
Page twenty-one on the, his report.
Thank you, Mark.
You want to go further?
I'm not sure why it was, like, not put in the rest of them, but PDFing. There, there it is. So there's two of them. So if you, this one, so this actually shows, we went out and did some test pits in our field, those are the little boxes.
Yeah.
So these, these boxes represent well test pits, and this entire area is actually a pretty good pile of sand and gravel with, with, you know, deep groundwater. So this would actually be a very good area for a pretty small effluent disposal field. You could get a lot of bang for your buck, because the higher, the more perviable the soil is, the smaller footprint you need. We're confident that you could, anywhere in this area, you could site leaching, anywhere back here, you could site leaching. You could even probably put leaching over in this area if you wanted to. You know, as you know, this field's lower than that field, so being up here gives you more separation of groundwater, which is a good thing. So, but, you know, I think if you look at this in, in terms of, you know, surrounding properties, there aren't any houses, you know, in these areas right up against your population. So I think this actually lends well to possibly sighting a leaching. Can we scroll for the next slide? So just, you know, back of the envelope, you know, and I overlaid this over Google, and I just think it's pretty helpful. If you wanted to build a leaching field that was twice your current volume, your current volume's about twelve thousand gallons per day, you know, this is twenty-four thousand gallons per day. So if you wanted to do just what you're at now, and there was no plans to ever do in expansion, you could essentially divide that in half. So I think that, you know, hopefully this gives you the context of, you could kind of tuck something way back on the corner of that property and not really hamstring yourself in terms of, you know, future configurations, that type of stuff. If you need to move the well, you have, you have room, you know, in terms of where those, those radius are, because you can kind of stick this thing in a corner and put it so that it really does put it out of the way and get you flexibility going forward.
So let me ask you a question. You doubled it, so how, I mean, I don't know enough about it, other than it gets tested, so.
Yeah.
If you doubled it, how many people does that, I mean, is that, is that how you decide what the size is gonna be?
Yeah, so that, you would, you would look at student population and, and project that out. I just, I just doubled it for the sake of being as sure.
No, that's okay, so I, I wanna understand what twelve thousand is and twenty-four thousand is, and how that translates, because I'm thinking about what our population is and what the outlook is for-
Yeah, so rough numbers, that's doubling your high school size.
Oh, yeah, okay. But I don't, I don't know.
And is the estimate based on twenty-four versus twelve?
No, so the, the, the full-blown estimate was based on twelve, but with, like, there's a lot of contingencies in there. You know, if, in the right bidding climate and everything, I could see you getting twenty-four out of that number, to be honest.
So if we did twelve, and we did it there, and then the estimate that we have, because it's probably now further away, that there would be some additional expense?
So what I, what I would suggest, and what I think, you know, if you, if we're gonna go this route, I, I think that the smart play is to engineer and permit an area for some number, whether it's twenty-four or twenty or something, but that gives you guys a realistic possibility for future flow.
Mm-hmm.
And then just build the twelve, and that way you've got it all, this area kind of cordoned off and available, that, you know, so if five years from now you actually do expand the school, build a new school, you just come in and, you know, build the other half. And that way, you're not going back to the state, it's, it's, everything's all on, you know, all the testing's been done, the modeling's been done, and, and it's something that you can just do when you're ready, and that way you don't have to spend any construction expense.
So the wastewater treatment plant can basically stay the way it is, except now you have to add turbidity and that other thing? So you have to, you have to do something to the wastewater treatment plant?
Not, you wouldn't, turbidity limits only if you don't move the leaching field. If you move the leaching field, your permit, your, your constituents are gonna stay the same. Actually, can we scroll? Permit is in here.
And then we wanna kind of wrap up last comments, Steve wants to ask something, right?
It's a stupid question, but it's no such thing as a stupid question, so.
I don't even know how they measure the waste amount. It's not- All right, Len, Len, your answer.
So this is your, this is the old permit. This was what you had before you, you know, the change of remade. This is what you're currently doing right now. As of, you know, September first, twenty eighteen, these are gonna be your new limits. So this is what you would, if you moved the leaching field, you would stay here, okay?
Why? Why, why would, why would we, why is there demand for lower numbers?
Because if you, if you don't move the leaching field, you're within six months of that well across the street.
So it's the distance-
Oh, the proximity to those other wells.
Exactly.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so can you cross a pipe across the gas line?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it, you know, the gas company's gonna have to be involved in that whole process, but.
What do we do about it, butters? Because that's right on the property line, it looks pretty close, or it's less than a hundred feet from the property line, it looks at least.
Yeah, the state, the state setback's twenty-five, so you can go right up to twenty-five feet to that property line and be within the requirements of the, the requirement of district.
We don't have to notify a butters of?
Um, no, actually you wouldn't technically, because it's a state permit.
We can talk about that one later. I don't wanna, I don't wanna wrestle that one now.
I've got a question.
Sure.
If we move the Leech Field.
Yeah.
The old Leech Field just sits there?
Yep.
And how long before it would be buildable?
You could take it out and build on it right away, if you, if you want to dig up that area and put something in its place.
How much digging do you have to do?
So the general rule of thumb is you're gonna take it down to the field, and then whatever biomap that's there, you're gonna wanna take that out as well. And I, to be honest, I don't, the field is so old, I don't know how deep it is, it can't be more than, you know, four feet below grade, because there's a limit on, you can only have three feet of cover over a field, so, you know, it's probably four to five feet down. So, but if you removed all the material out, you know, you could then.
Would you give you foundation, you would get out of it?
Absolutely, you'd take it all out and dispose of it. You know, the stuff that's got biom, and I would have to go, you know, you'd have to just be disposed of.
So Dave, what you're talking about now, that little scenario you just laid out for us, is that included in the price, or would there be additional fees?
For taking out the Leech Field?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that wasn't envisioned as part of that, but you would only do that if you were building a little school there.
Right.
So. So you, you know, you wouldn't do that upfront, that wouldn't necess, you wouldn't have, there wouldn't be no.
Oh, you mean it would be part of a bill?
Yes, you wouldn't need to do that now.
Oh, so.
Right, that could be.
Got it, got it, got it. All right, wanna wrap it up, guys, one last question?
It's gonna need to be pumped, right? So do we have a pump that's already in place that's gonna be used for that? Or is there like a pump house and so forth, or what?
Yeah, so there's an existing tank that's at the treatment plant that feeds the existing field.
Yeah.
You would just upgrade the mechanicals and new pumps to feed the new field, because it's a little further away.
And the quote includes those upgrades?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, so, welcome to the Minnesota Regional School Committee, because we have a lot of opinions and questions. I truly appreciate the expertise you bring to us. I think we need to, oh, timeline.
Yes, so we had a meeting with the DEP already, and, you know, because obviously that September one, twenty eighteen deadline is looming, and there appears to be some possible play with that number. The way we left the meeting was, is that the state, and these guys did a great job, by the way, conveying the fact that, you know, there's a lot of balls in the air right now in the district, and that it's really hard to read the tea leaves on what's gonna happen out here. And the state was, they understood that, they were, they didn't just turn a deaf ear to it. So I think that what they're gonna be looking for from you guys is, is some.
A commitment.
Direction and commitment. They wanna understand that you're moving forward to addressing this and not just kind of kicking the ball down the road. And what they essentially said was, if you're gonna move in a direction, you know, whether it's put new leaching in, make changes to the plan, something, whatever it is, that, you know, you give them that commitment that you're doing it in a timeline, preferably with some sort of, you know, engineering associated with it. And then the discussion about when it actually gets implemented in terms of construction can be had. So, you know, we've been talking about the fact that, you know, just from a practical perspective, as a school, you're really limited to summertime to do any major infrastructural work. So honestly, I don't, I think that this summer is probably tight. I don't, because of the permitting process and the testing and modeling that's involved, and like, if you did a new leach field, it's, there's a process that goes on with it, the state has, you know, ninety days to review stuff. So, you know, there's timing there that we probably don't have, so I think they'd be amenable to, if, you know, the district is interested in committing to a solution and starting the process of permitting it with the state, maybe moving construction to summer twenty nineteen. So that gives you a year to come up with that big number.
So they would, they would give us a grace period while we were not in compliance and not buying up?
They already gave you a grace period, you're not in compliance right now, but they gave you a year, they gave you till twenty eighteen to do it. So the question is, can we get them to extend that grace period more? So, and I think that's a worthy, I think that's, I think that's.
Can you go find out about that, please?
Well, so we, at our meeting, at our meeting, we kind of laid the groundwork for that. So, but what they actually asked us to do is come back with something formal. In terms of like, you know, put, put something down and like, you know, let's say you guys, for the sake of discussion or argument, we're gonna do a leach field. They would like to see that you say, all right, we're gonna agree to test the site and engineer and permit with the state, the new leach field by such and such a date, with the intent of constructing it in the summer of twenty nineteen. I honestly think that that's something you probably can get approved.
So, so we don't have a whole lot of time, I mean, nobody wants to, so we, as a committee, are sitting here thinking, well, wait a minute, we don't wanna rush into something, and what you folks are saying is you don't really have any time, because this has been kind of ongoing for a while.
Yeah, so, you know, they're looking at, the state's trying to look at to get some commitment on the fact that, you know, they'd like to see the ball starting to move.
So, yeah, hold on a second. So I just, honestly, guys, I personally, I mean, you guys all jump in with your opinions. I don't wanna mess around with the state, I'm really ripped about the fact that I stopped myself from saying that other word, but I really am about this being kind of forced on us. But I kind of feel like it is what it is, in a way. I hear what you were saying, Neil, about, let's look at other options, but it sounds like the clock is ticking, and if we were already on borrowed time, I'm worried that, I don't wanna incur fees and fines on something that we're gonna have to do anyway, regardless of what we do with the building itself.
Right.
Does the plan have a possibility of, so if we get the permit for twenty nineteen, and something happens, and we need that area and it needs to move? I mean, they're, they're not that strict that they're gonna say, no, you can't do that, and you gotta stick to your plan?
No, I think that, you know, I think that being a municipal structure for all intents and purposes does buy you a lot of cachet. If you were, if you were a private entity, you'd probably have a tough side of that, right? But, you know, the fact that, you know, you're dealing with three towns, and there's a lot of moving parts, there's funding, and it's a, they're not, I mean, you know, they go through this stuff themselves, they're not adverse to unchallenged, so. And I think that part of the, if, you know, if as a group, you can come together on that idea of a plan, and you can put off construction for a whole year and a half.
So tell us.
That does give you guys more time to really develop what you wanna do, without feeling like you gotta really make a commitment right now and have something in the ground by September fourth.
Right, no, I understand that. I'll let you talk a second, but I wanna know what it is your recommendation is to us in order for the action we need to take?
Yeah, my professional opinion, I think the leach field gives you the most bang for your buck, I really do. Because it keeps your, it keeps your permit at that limits, you know your existing treatment plant can handle that, you know, in terms of what it can do in process, because it's already doing it, and it also keeps your operations and maintenance costs static, right? You understand that you're not gonna be adding some major forty, fifty thousand dollar a year pile on top of that. So I think that that's really your best bang for your buck.
And your recommendation is, what would we need to do next?
So I would say that, you know, the plan would be is to, you know, come to a consensus on that, and if that consensus is there, start the, the engineering, the permitting with the state, you know, do the engineering, you need to permit with the state, a new leach field, and give them a realistic timeline on when you'll have that stuff to them and when they can review and approve it. And then at the same time, say, listen, we, we don't feel like we can get the engineering and permitting done in a timely enough manner, because of, you know, weather, site, DEP review periods to effectively bid and construct this in the summer of twenty eighteen, we'd like to request an extension to build it in twenty nineteen summer.
So we need a warrant article, just for the engineering and the permits?
Right.
And how much do you think all that would be?
Yes, yes, and that number was actually in that three hundred, that's part of that, so, you know, I came here.
But we don't want it all, right?
Absolutely not, right, you just want the upfront stuff. So, you know, the site testing and everything, you know, you're looking at around fifty thousand from drilling well, drilling monitoring wells, to engineering, to permitting, and all that stuff, so.
So.
And, you know, I can get, if you need.
Is that a not-to-exceed number?
I, I put together a formal proposal, but it would be a not-to-exceed. I would get you a formal proposal with.
You would bond it?
Exactly.
No, we need to go to all three towns and get it accepted.
It has to go on the.
Well, we could pay it out of our budget if we chose to do it that way, you don't have to bond it.
I'm not doing that again, no.
How are we gonna keep drawing money out of this budget, it keeps losing money from grants, and I get.
I understand. I'm saying you have to think about it, it's not automatic about how you go about financing.
Well, and I get that, I get that, but we need a write-up to fit into the warrant to go to all three towns for May, so that they know.
Yeah, but that, that, if we decide to do, if we decide to move this route, then Pat's gonna take point on that, work with Dave and Rob, and that's gonna be, that would be part of annual town meeting.
But that's the vote you.
That's the vote that we would need to take, yeah. So let Neil go, and then, I'm sorry, Dave, you're screwed.
It's fine. I, listen, I'd rather get this off here, let's, let's get it done.
I just, I have one quick question, and then I have a comment on that. So the quick question that came up when you were talking was, as far as the treatment plant, is there a life to the treatment plant itself? And how old is the treatment plant?
The plant is, gotta be fifteen or so. Actually, it's more than that, it's somewhere between fifteen and twenty.
So what's the life on?
So the life on, is very, it's a, it's a sliding life, it depends, like, for example, your pumps and stuff, you're gonna replace those every five to ten years. The building itself is a, and the tanks are fifty, so, you know, I think that.
So we're not worried about the life of the treatment plant? In other words, we do all this, now we have to go for a new treatment plant? We're looking at the big thing holistically and?
Yes, no, right, so the bones of your treatment plant are solid, it's about the mechanicals and, you know, pumps, blowers, that type of stuff, which you're gonna be replacing along the way anyway, so those kind of like, as they fail, you replace them. So, you know, you're not looking at, you know, major new tankage, tearing the building down, putting the building up type stuff now.
Sure, then I, thank you. Then I would put out there, this is just myself, what I would be, I personally would love to see, is, I appreciate what you put together for the, for the drawings and the ghoul and so forth. I would like to see the existing leach field actually marked out on the map in relation to the wells. And then I would like to see an idea of both the new leach field and proposed well sites, whether it's broken down like Mark said, to multiple smaller ones or a larger one, just to see, okay, we're moving forward, here are some options where these things will work and everything comes together. Because to me, it's, it's really difficult to only look at part of the picture without knowing, you know, I mean, water and sewer together.
Sure.
That really needs to come together in my mind. And I think if we can see that out there, and somebody, whether it's in addition with the engineering that's done or whatever, that they can say boom, 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 if it's smaller ones, or boom, you know, now we've got something to work with and we can feel comfortable.
Making a commitment.
Exactly.
Do you want that for the warrant presentation, or is that second part for later?
No, we need that.
That's just for my personal knowledge, just to make, make any decision.
I think we need that before we would vote on something.
Absolutely, in my mind.
Okay.
Actually, I have a worry, I just want, this first one here.
Jump right in.
It worries me that we're, if we don't move the leaching field, we're bound by these new numbers, so eventually, are we gonna have to go by those numbers below?
No, so those are a function of proximity of.
And that's the only reason for those.
Wells, absolutely.
And the lower numbers.
It's solely a function of your distance to a drink, a public drinking water supply.
It doesn't make our water any cleaner, but, okay.
Mark, go ahead, and this last question, hopefully.
As part of this process, we need to understand what the easement that the gas company has for that major pipeline, and what authority, what process there is, if any, for crossing.
How do we get that information, Dave? Who would we talk to for that?
That might be an in-town, town council-ish type discussion, because.
Really?
Didn't they, I mean, you would think that they.
Total independence.
Well, go ahead, Dave, I'm.
I, you know, I mean, when that easement was granted, it has to be some legal, like, document that actually memorializes that, that's recorded, the registry of deeds about what that easement is and what your rights are with it and everything, I mean, that's, so I would think that.
But would that not be a part and parcel of your engineering of all of this, would that not come into play with it?
We could certainly look at it, I mean, you know, in my mind, you know, the forced main crossing is not, it's a, it's like crossing a railroad type of thing, I mean, there's mechanisms to do that, so it wasn't something that raised a huge red flag to me, but, you know, I can certainly look into it and let you guys know.
This whole effort would be done in tandem with the town anyway, right? I mean, we would be including them, they would know, I mean, they've got skin in this game, too.
Right.
All right, so you feel confident about what we're, what you could come back to us with?
Sure.
Just quickly.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Set up a, we're gonna have a timeline for getting information and then making some decisions.
Well, I think Dave's gonna work on this, and when do you think you could?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure that the leaching wells figure, I think that that's actually already been generated as part of the analysis on the travel time, so that, that should be fairly easy to put my hands on. And then, you know, talk, getting a sense of the coal wells, I mean, probably a couple of weeks to get you guys some stuff, so it's not, you know, not a major effort.
So, so, end of January, mid, mid-February, maybe?
Yeah.
And then Pat, I don't know, Brooke, you guys would be working on the town with the, the gas component there, that gas line.
So if we can bring you back and, and you'll break down your figures in a nice neat package for us, you know, as per Lynn, Lynn's comments, I think that that would be very helpful for us as well.
Figures for?
The fifty thousand.
Oh, right, yes, I would put together a formal scope.
Yeah.
And a fee associated with that.
I think that that would just be very helpful for us.
Sorry?
Not to exceed.
Not to, absolutely.
Oh, lordy, all right, Dave, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it, that was very helpful, disturbing, but helpful.
It's a lot.
When do you think you come back?
Okay, Lynn, we're down to, he said, end of February, end of January, mid-February. Lord, you have to throw this one.
Did you work with Rob in terms of point of contact?
Yeah, Rob's, Rob's your point of contact.
Awesome, okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Rob, thank you for the long day.
The Rob.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, Kathy, you're a superintendent's, oh, no, I'm sorry, you're the superintendent.
Can you give us your?
Sure, your mid-year service on goals.
We were just, you asked me just to speak quickly on a couple of things, and so I'm just gonna go through the, those three, in particular, the key goals and a couple of comments. The first was looking at the ESL, ELL programming and, and some of the work that we're doing, and we looked towards staff realignments with that, we did some changes to leaderships and review of caseloads, and we did all of that to this point in time. I also wanna give a shout out to Harold Becker, I think, at the high school. We sat down with him in the summer and said, you know, would you, do you think you could help us out with, in this area? He didn't have any appropriate certification at that point in time, and we said, we'll help you out with it, getting certified, and he's steadily worked towards that, he's been passing all of his tests along the way, and so I just wanna say how much I really appreciated his help and support along the way with this. We've also had some staff, particularly at Florence Sawyer, who's, who's been an incredible source, a resource for us, to help do some things, too, so the team has really been working well. Martina Kenyon right now is helping to oversee that group, Patty O'Connor is out at this point in time, and so Martina's overseeing the group and running the regular meetings and such, and that's been, been very, very helpful. They keep track, they do regular updates with me, and so we've got a nice structure that's coming along that I'm very, very pleased with. So that's kind of an update on that. So basically, what we said we were going to do, in essence, we're on the route to doing that. The next piece is talking about the principals and the review process that we've done and started, and we've been working away at that. We're at the midway cycle now for them as well, so I'll be setting up meetings with each of them now to go and do the touchstone meeting, even though I meet regularly, regularly with our principals, this is a time to kind of sit aside and say, okay, so where are we sitting at right now in terms of your goals, in terms of where you're heading, and in terms of your vision? So those meetings will be established and coming up between late January and February. We wanna kind of get the budget out of the way first, and then we'll go back and focus on that. We took a look at re-establishing some forms, and we've, we've done, I think, a nice job on that, too. So, so basically, that goal's also well underway in terms of getting us to where we need to go. The other component is about communication, and that was one of the things in terms of our schools out to the communities and back and forth, and I had mentioned to a couple of you that we had spoken with somebody that is, is actually still working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and he's going to actually come in and do the more formalized approach towards the survey and such, and then pulling all that information together and reporting out to you, so I will have an actual report to say, here's exactly what the survey results look like. I know that Chairman Ramosco and I are on a conference call with him on Thursday at two thirty to just find to some of that. So that is also well on its way. I see that, that going out probably in about February, March in that area there, and then coming back and recording in April. So that's kind of where those goals are at in the, in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on those particular goals.
So the communication one, and the survey is for, for top-down, right? So it's for you and the principals?
Right, but the focus, the focus we were really looking at was more site-based as much as it was mine, so yes, you're right.
Okay. And again, we'll be helping with the question setting on that.
Is it, I'm just asking, it's your bailiwick, but is it possible to add to that communications thing? Like, the actual administration, interschool, like, or interschool communication?
Like with staff?
Yeah, well, yeah, and, well, I'm gonna give an example, I'm not gonna mention names or the scenario or whatever, but there was something that just recently came up where there was not a lot of communication about it, but it was an official action that everybody was supposed to be taking, and it generated a ton of queries, because people thought, is this actually real, is it, is it a phishing scam, is it something like that? And there was no communication that came out on that prior to that coming out. So it, so it wasted a lot of people's time in generating, and I'm just like, that's a perfect example of better communication with, because, and I say that because we were affected with that, too, so that's.
I think that that's part and parcel of what we're looking at, trying to get to, to be honest with you. So I would see that as, as you say, for example.
Lynn? And I'm just wondering about surveys in general, is there any consistency between the towns? Because I was looking at one for my daughters, and I, as, as I was reading it, I was like, this doesn't seem. Cause I, I was looking at one for my daughters and I, as, as I was reading it, I was like, this doesn't seem.
Okay, but that's, that's a whole different discussion.
I'm just wondering if there's some consistency, because.
No, with, with the, the, those, the type of surveys that you're talking about, no, those are really site-based communities. As opposed to what we're looking at, we're looking at trying to provide, trying to create a continuum across the district for expectations and such. So two totally different animals.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you. We did have a visitor who was coming, but due to the weather, wasn't able to make it, so, Pat, you'll reschedule the prim open presentation for us. Thank you. And I see that we have our principal from the high school in the room, and I didn't ask, but if there is a reason he's here, we can rejig your things. Oh, you're just, you're just so interested.
That's the only reason he came tonight was just to make sure.
Oh, well, thank you. Appreciate you doing that. Okay, Neil, budget and warrant, subcommittee report.
Yeah, so not really. We didn't have that this morning. There was a little bit of a storm, but we will be adding, uh, we'll be carrying forward, it's getting really big, the agenda, and the meetings are getting a little bit longer to, to cover some of the stuff over. We're gonna be adding post, um, post-workshop queries and follow-up that might be natural things to get pushed forward. OPEB actuarial posting, because we get it up to 2013, and there's been a request to see if we can get it.
Oh, do you imagine need to come back to the school committee with a recommendation on the funding? That was one of the things that you were asked for.
For OPEB?
Yeah.
We did.
Yeah, we did. We.
Is that where the hundred thousand is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Um, but then it's like a to-be-continued thing that.
Oh, where do we go from here?
Yeah, um, and then, um, I think we wanted to, we were gonna chat about athletic fees as far as perspective on that with family limitations, et cetera.
Yeah, so you guys are gonna come forward with the recommendation on that?
So those things are gonna be added in addition to the agenda that we missed.
So I don't wanna forget that, because one of the things I had said to the superintendent was, I wanted to make sure the athletic director that we talked about in her section on Saturday, if there were questions on that, just to revisit what that was, cause I don't wanna forget that, cause we need to, we need to do something for sure with that.
Are you looking to, to take a vote on the athletic fees on Saturday or, uh, no, at another point in time? Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're looking to speak and come up with some recommendations that we can bring forward to the, the school committee.
Okay, fair enough. I wasn't sure whether that, that had landed.
Yeah, discussed it, yeah.
Okay.
Food fight.
You, you guys might need to get a couple more meetings on the calendar, because I don't wanna get.
That's a possibility.
Yeah, I, I, cause I, cause I, cause I wanna, I wanna be careful, because I think the conversation that you're gonna have is gonna be important for the rest of us and then make the decision, and then Pat's sitting over there waiting for the trickle-down stuff to revise everything that she's doing, so I just don't wanna put us behind the eight ball. And just to remind everybody, our regional agreement states that we have to have our budget approved and delivered to the towns on March fifteenth. So we have two months to get this done, and I mean, we're in a much better position now than we were last year, but we may end up looking at, you know, adding additional meetings. I am working really hard to preserve these next several meetings, and anything that we can push off, including some of the things we really wanna see, just so we can dedicate our time, we, we might, we may likely have to ask some of the presentations to move.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. And, and just a reminder too, and I know that I said this last year, I mean, I'll say it again this year, if you find that you wanna bring any of those people back, like, they're gonna be here Saturday, but if you will bring them back for additional discussion?
Oh, we will. It's an intro on Saturday.
Yeah, it kinda, sometimes it is.
Yeah, Lynn.
And I probably wanna give you guys a little work, but are they gonna reconcile the revolving accounts, recommendations on those? So we talked about the numbers and what to do with them, like the, the.
I don't know if that, does that have to be done during the budget cycle?
That's, that's actually a policy issue at this point, because we need to have policy to direct the superintendent, the administration, on what to do with the revolving accounts, if that's what you mean, like, are you talking about like?
Can you put that on your?
revolving accounts and so forth?
Can you put that on your timeline, given what's gonna happen over the next two months, for after the budget season's closed, Neil?
Yeah.
I would just move that one.
And we also have the other thing, since we're throwing all this stuff in the wall, um, we've also got rental fees and so forth that we need to nail down.
Now, are we, are we taking that before, just for my purpose for process, are we taking that first to budget and warrant? Or are we bringing that to this group?
I think you should be.
I'm ready to go.
I think you should bring the recommendation here, and if there's discussion, push it back down.
Okay, so, Pat, we should probably add that to our, cause we're also to go with that.
Cool.
So we'll add that, all the way to the next agenda, rentals.
Unless it, it hasn't ha- it hasn't happened at Budget More, okay, yes. No, we, we know what it is, and then if there's more conversation, and you know there will, then we'll end up asking.
Doctor's comment, there's an opportunity for questions to get asked so that they can clarify the presentation that comes to the school committee. So it could be, if you send it to Budget More, some questions get generated that will make the presentation that comes to this committee better, without, you know, us even having to recommend anything, just by having some, some set of eyes look at it. So it could be an opportunity to make a better presentation.
Yeah, we need to say that with everything. I mean, frankly, one of the things at some point we're gonna talk about is do we dissolve budget and warrant and that we have the entire committee. You see those emails that come through from the listserv? The entire committee is the budget and warrant committee. But that's for another time. I think for right now, when it's a big-scale issue like that, that's been something that we've kind of kicked around, I think, present it and then push it. Neil's gonna have conniption.
No, I don't think we're gonna bring it up right now, but I think that.
All right, so personnel report.
We, our next meeting is Monday.
We also canceled today, but I got an email from Dorothy yesterday saying she reviewed the concerns that, or the questions that Budget and Warrant had and has some comments for the policies of committee, but thought it might be a good idea since, um, we were rescheduling, that we include you guys for a portion of the next meeting, cause it's two sections that we'll be going over with her that are very short.
Cool.
So they might be, so I'll send an email to both you and Dorothy so we can get some data.
Well, we'll do like a, like a two-meeting like before?
Before a regular school meeting, if that's okay.
Sound all right with you guys?
Can I ask a question going back to Kathy?
Yeah.
What's the status of the labor agreement?
The labor agreement?
The Unit C?
Yeah, has it been signed?
Oh, the Unit A.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I asked Mike that the last time he was, we saw him. He's gotta finalize it and then they have to sign it.
This is like three months.
Yeah, but that, but that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean that it hasn't already happened, right, in terms of.
It's an agreement.
It's, it's, yeah, it's just final stuff, but the, um, the, the initial piece has already been done and their salaries have all been caught up now. Their pay has all been adjusted and so.
But Steve's right, because he told us he would have at the end of December, beginning of January. Can you find out from him when? Cause the last time he was here and we, it was, it was the last time he was here, and we had an executive session, he was here, and he said, oh yeah, it's almost done, it's almost done.
You're right, you're right about that, yeah.
So, good boy.
I think he said there have been some problems with the formatting or some such.
Oh, yeah, because of the, the document, the original document, the, cause whatever, conditions.
Yeah, okay.
And Elise isn't here for CPAC, but Steve, you were.
Yes, I attended, I attended two, two meetings in relation to the Emergency Response Task Force. The first was on Monday afternoon, the eighth, which a number of people were involved, and then the other one was Wednesday morning, the tenth, where, with all the principals. A presentation was made towards the principals. Lisa is picked up where the previous holder of that position left off last year, looking at the ALIS program. And the ALIS program for security for the schools and response that is specifically designed, each one of the training sessions that you work with the kids is specifically designed for the age group that we're, that you're gonna be training with. And one of the interesting things that came out was that we do fire drills all the time, and the last time a child was lost in a fire drill was in nineteen fifty-eight, oh, lost in a fire in a school, was in nineteen fifty-eight. And we don't do any training for any other kind of a situation in a school, and when was the last time a child was lost? Last week, yesterday, two weeks ago, something like that. So while there was some pushback by some of the principals who had not totally bought into the concept of ALIS, and if anyone is, is unaware, ALIS is obviously an acronym for alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. And it's a program that a lot of, a lot of the instruction can be done online for minimal cost, and I firmly feel that we need to be able, we need to address this danger that lurks out there, because as I've heard time and again, oh, these things don't happen in our town. Well, quite truthfully, that's exactly where they happen. They happen in Newtown, Connecticut, not Los An- South Los Angeles. And we need to be able to look at a program that will train our people to be able to respond, just as the kids do with a fire drill. The minute they hear that bell going off, they know exactly what to do, and we need to be able to train and get our, our students acclimated to the effect of how, how to react to a situation in the schools.
I was confused. I always thought we did ALIS. I, I thought we'd been doing it.
I wanna bring some clarif- a bit of clarification to that, so no, we don't. And actually, what we were looking at was more of an ALIS hybrid than a full ALIS, because I know philosophically, I don't support just ALIS. So what Lisa's looking at doing is bringing in ALIS hybrid in, and so no, we, we don't right now. So it, it's, you know what was interesting, Steve? I mean, there were, I only, I was in between meetings, so I was coming, dropping in and out of that meeting, but I, I shared with Chairman Ramosco that the last thing that we did, the last video that we watched was, do you, do you recall? It was the school committee meeting with the shooter.
Someone coming in and threatening the school committee with a weapon.
With, with a gun. And that was the last video that we, we looked at, that, that we watched that day. I think, a shout-out to our Lancaster police too, because our Lancaster police attended, and they, that was also, I mean, I won't share, you know, some inappropriate venue, but.
Well-trained and well-prepared.
They were very well-prepared, and the examples that they gave us were outstanding and astonishing. It's scary, you know, so. But, but you're absolutely right. Lisa's picking up from where Donna left off. She's doing a great job, and I, I think that what the principals were pushing back on was the full ALIS as opposed to a, a hybrid, and I think that we're all philosophically much more accepting of the hybrid.
What was, cause we've heard this before, a few years ago, this came up, the school committee, what, what is it that you're not comfortable with in that training?
I think, have you, do you know much about that training? No, see, I, I, you know, what we may wanna do is bring her in and do a, have her come in and show.
Cause she's a certified trainer.
She is, and you know, I, I, I really hesitate to just, like, the counter piece, I can buy the counter piece, you know, you know, the notion of kids throwing stuff, or, you know, I can buy some of that. It does make me nervous about just evacuating. If you, like, there's a piece there that we have to really be cautious with.
Remember, the other, the other video was Columbine, and in the library, where the natural reaction of the teacher and the kid was to hide under the desks when the shooters came in through the door, and there was an exit on the other end of the room, and nobody went out.
Nobody went out. So there's, there, it's pretty all-encompassing, but I think that we're on the right track right now. I'm very comfortable with what we're approaching right now. So I think, to your point, I think it's a really good idea to, to take that next step forward now, have them come in and present to the school committee after budget season.
Can I suggest that if you have an outside person to come in, that there also be local police officers who have experience, cause they're trained as well, and so just to have that, that presence and their experience and their thoughts.
Yeah. It, I thought the police were very helpful. The Lancaster police were very, very helpful in this the other day. Very resourceful.
All right.
And the other thing is, there's a school health advisory meeting on Monday at three thirty here.
Why don't we put that down for a presentation in March on your calendar?
What do we wanna comment?
Well, I'll let you. School Emergency.
Emergency.
Response Task Force, ALIS hybrid. Okay. Even pushing the things up against the doors and that kind of thing. I mean, there's a lot of really good things to that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Correspondents, anything of note? Consent agenda, unless there are any concerns, the meeting minutes, January third, twenty eighteen, warrants of January nineteenth. I know we have to sign those. Twenty eighteen should be considered good to go. And the items for our next agenda, well, since the meeting is Saturday, that is our, our next meeting, but our next school committee meeting is on the thirty-first, and I'm trying to keep that meeting clean so that we can have some robust conversation following the workshop. And I think we're gonna end up asking Budget and Warrant to take a lot of those components back, so, um, that's good. And that's it, and unless anybody has anything else, I'd like someone to move to adjourn.
Oh, I can motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Neil.
Sorry.
And Kathy, second. All those in favor? unanimous, thank you.